Good evening, the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees Study Session for Tuesday, January 7th shall come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorva here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kirmi.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
All right, need a move, a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020.
Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, tonight, because it's a study session, we weren't expecting public comments at the beginning, but we do have a couple folks here, unless you want to suffer through our entire meeting and leave at, you know, eight thirty, a little subliminal message there. I can have you come up now, but I will still try to hold you to three minutes each, okay? So why don't we do that, we'll do public comment now for anybody here, and then we'll also do it at the end of the meeting as well. So Jerry, does the, how does the system work right now? It's working great, awesome. Okay, you're up.
Good evening, my name is Beverly Ellis, I live in Colony Farms condos for over twenty-five years, and serve on its Board of Directors. I wish to make a statement regarding these proposed special assessment district for the rehabilitation of roads in Colony Farms subdivision, and state objections. Here is a recap of our history. The subdivision and condos were established in nineteen seventy-three, and there is a contract built into our deed between the two entities. This contract has been in force since nineteen seventy-three. There are ninety-three lots in Colony Farms subdivision, ninety-two lots with individual homes, and one lot in forty, with forty-eight condos. Since nineteen seventy-three, the condos have paid twenty point six nine six percent of the annual funding of the subdivision per the contract. The condos have one private road, fully funded by condo owners. This year, a SAD was initiated by the subdivision, and they proceeded without our participation. In June, condo owners were told by the township that each condo would pay an assessment equal to that of the homeowner, an equal amount because a past precedent had been set by the township. The condos only represent five point five percent of the frontage of the subdivision as a whole. But we are being asked to pay not twenty point six nine six percent, but thirty-four percent of the costs. I'm here tonight because the condos object to the funding criteria of the SAD. We would like you to consider these issues. Did the township review the longstanding contract between the subdivisions and the condos that specifically addresses funding? How many condominium associations have the past president been used to determine that condos pay an equal amount? How many of those condos that set the past precedent have private roads, are landlocked, and have a longstanding agreement with the subdivision? If you have documents that can clarify this, we will send a FOIA request. What specific benefits will the homeowners receive from the SAD? In addition to rehabilitated roads, there is the potential increase in their property values. And homeowners will pay a much lower assessment if the condos pay an equal amount. What specific benefits do the condos receive from the SAD? Access to and from our community, period. In closing, the details of your past precedent decisions are vital to our position regarding funding. And while the past president may offer a blueprint, blueprints can be redrawn. Many things are legal and set a precedent until they do not. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
I have a letter with these comments.
Certainly.
To whom should I give?
Just give them to Jerry, the clerk here, and then he'll make copies for all of us and for the,
For the record.
For the record. Thank you. Anybody else at this time? Okay, if not, we're going to go back to the Item C, New Business, and what we're doing tonight is the annual Board of Trustees Goal Setting for 2020. In front of you is the, just the discussion list that I put together every year. It's, I'm not necessarily wedded to any of these, I just put them out there for discussion. We also have some suggestions from Trustee Kirmi, which is a separate document, and also from Treasurer Clinton. Some of these are similar, and I will certainly ask that they comment once we go through this, because this will probably address some of the other, some of the other issues that you might have as well. So what, I guess I'll just kick it off. And what we've got here is very identical to what we've been using for, I think, the last two years at least, which is a list of the various services, key core services that we provide, which would be public safety, infrastructure, fiscal responsibility, quality of life, economic development. Got it down to two pages this year. So, so for public safety, I'm just going to zip through these rather quickly, and just entertain any questions that anybody might have. Applying for the new insurance rating, that's something that Chief Phillips is working on.
That's already started, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's been working on that for a while.
The plan is to complete it?
Yeah.
That's the goal, is it completed in twenty twenty?
Yeah. So that would be a completed. Okay. Providing fire service to Plymouth City is something that we have been talking off the record with the city about. They still have a contract with Northville City to provide fire services. I'm not, I think Jerry, there's about two years left on that agreement. So this is a more, this is not a twenty twenty goal that has to be done by the end of the year, but just something that we should be thinking about. If they, if they decide to move to a different type of public safety model, the idea is that we would provide fire service only, they would stick with HVA, and then we would be, we would bill them on a, we would come up with some kind of a billing structure, whether that would be per run. I've also been told that it might be more advantageous for us to have a blanket agreement with them, which would satisfy the, the insurance folks. I don't know, Chief, if you want to comment on that, but it's pretty much what that is.
When you say satisfy insurance folks, which, insurance in the Plymouth Township for homeowners? Or in the city of Plymouth?
Previously mentioned ISO rating, we would be required to do a blanket policy per run, for both the city's best and ours, so that they can get maximum value for the service. And that's what our.
I'm confused.
What's up with the sound?
Oh, oh, we can't hear?
Turned it off.
Now, there we go. The, we would need a blanket policy to satisfy ISO requirements, so that the city of Plymouth residents would get proper consideration for their insurance premiums, as opposed to a per-run basis. They don't recognize that like they do, you know, blanket policies that we will provide fire protection. They don't want like a as-needed type of contract. They want a, you will provide the service, more of a blanket policy. Well, wait a minute, when you say the insurance rating, the, that would affect the city of Plymouth, not Plymouth Township residents. So if the city of Plymouth wants to go per-run, that's, and we can make a negotiation based on that, what would keep us from doing that? I would have to do a little bit more research into what they required, but it would definitely benefit the city, and it would benefit the township, there's.
I think really quick, the insurance issue is that for their insurance purposes, you have to have, it's best to have a contract where we receive a lump sum, probably based on estimated runs or something like that, because if you get paid on a per-run basis, there's the, it wouldn't happen, but you, you run the risk that we might say, huh, we're not available. You're on your own. So this way, we have a contractual obligation.
All right, well, that'll take some more work, because there's a lot of agreements in the state of Michigan that are per-run.
So again, that's, that's just, I'm just putting it on your radar screen.
All right.
And then the third one is what we're going to be discussing tonight, is purchasing a fire engine from the city. So we'll talk more about that later. Infrastructure, which is water, sewer, roads, and sidewalks, yes, sir?
Quick question.
Yeah.
Mutual aid, does that affect insurance rating?
Yeah. It does in some ways. We have an agreement with the city of Plymouth, it's called an auto aid agreement. That does affect them. But if we provide service to another community like Canton, we're required to do that as part of our EMS licensure through the state of Michigan. We're required to have mutual aid agreements and, you know, and they're supposed to be, I believe, under three years old right now, they have to be re-looked at every three years per the state. So there's those requirements, but as far as, do you have to have it? No, you don't have to have it, but it can affect it, and it can benefit us, like it does with the city right now.
That's the key, that's what I'm thinking of, is what benefits us on this. Thanks.
A lot of work would have to go into that one, if it, if it happens at all. I doubt it'll happen in twenty twenty, but again, I just want you guys to start thinking about it. Infrastructure, we're talking here about continuing the sidewalk installation program, and then also improving communication and outreach, that was one of Chuck's comments from several meetings ago. Just so that we do a better job of explaining to residents that sidewalks are very important for quality of life and for connectivity, and try to appeal to their sense of, of community and patriotism that they will allow us to install side, this is where, this is where we don't have sidewalks right now. And just do a better job of communication and outreach.
And also send those letters out on behalf of the township, not necessarily rely on the engineer to.
Yeah, but they would be signed either by, I don't know, by me or Pat Felrath or somebody on behalf of the township, and make it more of a, make it more of a personal appeal rather than a, you have an easement and we would like to build X, Y, Z.
The repair program in the southeast was our target.
Yeah.
Is that on the list, or is that included in that?
It's really, it's really kind of included, because it's, it's ongoing and it's going to continue this year. They're going out for, Spalding De Decker is going out for bids this month for the sidewalk replacement program. This is to fix cracks and slabs. So they will be bidding that out this year. We've already targeted all of the sites that we want to do, and we'll do it based on what kind of feedback we get back from the bidders. Finalize and maintain township-wide GIS system, that is, that should be wrapped up in February. Spalding's been working on that, and they're going to give a presentation to us in February, I believe at our February study session.
Who will be doing the maintenance once it's updated?
That will be, right now, we've got, what's his name, Sue Garrett? Garrett, yeah, Garrett who did our GIS for many years, he was an MSU student. He's back in town, and we've, in fact, we've just hired him back to do the GIS part-time again. I see that as a short-term solution though, so I still think we have to have a discussion about what our, what our GIS needs really are as far as updating and managing the system. I still don't think it requires a full-time person, but maybe that's something that we can contract out. A lot of communities our size do do that.
So the DPW and the Fire Department and Police Department will have all their data loaded by February twenty-eighth?
I think they will. I think a lot of that's already been done.
Do you agree, whatever?
He may not know, you guys may not know all the details.
Hundred percent sure, yeah.
We've got.
Are you providing direction to Spalding De Decker?
Yeah.
At this point, Spalding De Decker has been updating all of the information in the, in the layers that need to be done. And once that is, that is going to be done in that date, so all the data will be proper. And then what we have to do is just make sure that it's applied to all the different layers for each individual department, which should be very quick.
They're, they're, they've pretty much populated all the layers right now. They're pretty much fine-tuning it as we speak, so. In February, I believe it'll be February eighth or eleventh, that when they come in for the study session, they'll give a presentation on that and the sidewalk replacement program for this year. So improve appearance and landscape of Ann Arbor rail overpass. The Downtown Development Authority signed a contract with CSX in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to allow CSX engineers to explore different types of landscaping and beautification efforts for that, for that overpass.
So we will pay CSX to do the planning?
No, we're paying, we're paying CSX basically for them to do a study on what they think needs to be done to not only beautify, but what are the options that they're comfortable with, with, with respect to sidewalks underneath the overpass, and maybe just rehabbing the, the overpass itself.
So non-structural, so appearance-related rehabbing?
Yeah.
All right.
Because a lot of that is their property, and the easements, it's a, it's a three-way easement in that area. You've got CSX, you've got MDOT, and you've got Wayne County. So, and remember, we did a study in two thousand eight, an extensive study where, and we've shared all that information with them, it was an extensive study that was done by Hubbell Roth and Clark, and they did some kind of design charrettes at that time with the DDA, with DPW, maybe with the board at that time, I don't remember, but.
Well, in about nineteen ninety-five, there was a day-long charrette. And Jim Anowitz conducted that. It'd be great if we could find those, the drawings were done on butcher paper by students and architects. There was a lot of great ideas, you know, you could roll it out.
Yeah.
What's a charrette?
We, we have all the two thousand eight stuff, and it's, it's extensive, and clearly somebody spent a lot of money on it. So that's what Jim Anowitz referred me to, based on my conversations with him. It's a great, it's a good piece of work, it's very extensive, and Laura has shared that with, with CSX.
What is a charrette?
It's a fancy way of a bunch of people getting together and talking about things with a consultant.
Design ideas usually are percolated up that way.
It's French.
We had one of those with the golf course.
Do they have French toast? Sometimes, as a result, there's a maquette produced.
Ooh, a maquette.
A charrette might produce a maquette, oui oui. A maquette?
So anyway, that's what's going on with that. Is that, is that something that's going to be done in twenty twenty? No, I mean, that's a, that's a very long-term process. Develop and finalize SAD policies and procedures, improve communication outreach, that's just an ongoing thing. We do have Kevin Bennett, I believe that our next meeting is going to introduce a legal opinion that you may want to take action on with respect to this, the new two-step policy that we've, that we've adopted, which is the new practice, it's not a policy that's been formally adopted. So, you know, Kevin's, Kevin's got that done, it will be on our agenda for next week. I don't know what, I guess we'll tackle that when, when it comes up, right Kevin? Do you have anything new? Kevin, we'll circulate the opinion tomorrow, and then we'll, we'll see where we go from there. But it's, we're, we're doing the two-step plan, we've been doing it. It's not like a charrette either, Bob, it's a two-step, but it's another, it's just the way that we've been, we've been doing it now for the last probably four, four different SADS. Work with MDOT and DDOT, or DOT, DOT, oh, federal. That's just a big hairy long-range project. The whole M fourteen Beck intersection is a mess, and it's not going to get any better with all the new construction and projects that are going on on our side and, and the Northville side. There's a lot of congestion there, and then you throw in the railroads, and it gets even worse. I don't know what the solution is, I know in the past, we talked about a, another grade separation or an off-ramp, a new, a wholly new ramp that would be west of Beck, but we're talking multi-multi-million dollar project. And I think as Canton Township learned, when they wanted similar improvements to two seventy-five, the federal government is never going to give money to something that they, that they believe would be promoting sprawl. So, again, we're, we're open to suggestions, but that's just going to be a big, big long project for the future. Develop long-range road repair plan with county. If you drive down Beck Road right now, it's, you know, between Ann Arbor Road and, and North Territorial, it's starting to, it's starting to bust up. And it's something that we need to start planning with the county and get that on their radar as a major road project for the future. Similarly, Ann Arbor Road, wherever those gap separations are in front of Pioneer Middle School, going really in both directions, but it's a, it's a real, it's a real mess there, and it's not going to get any better. We are hoping this summer that we will have the installation of the traffic signals at McLumpha and Ann Arbor Road. And then the county and MDOT are also working on left-hand turn signals at, at Ann Arbor Road and Beck, which has been another longstanding issue. Whether they're going to get it done in twenty twenty, I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that. I think it's going to take longer than that. But they've done all the survey work, they, they've been communicating with, with our, our DPW and engineers, and we've been giving feedback as well.
I just want to suggest also at Hagerty, is it Hagerty? Five Mile and, no, I guess it's Northville Road. So when you're trying to make a left turn, southbound onto eastbound Five Mile, you have to wait multiple lights, because people come over the M fourteen bridge, you know, at forty-five miles an hour, whatever, so it's, that's another one where the county should. And it's right by the Phoenix Mill property, which obviously would be helpful to have some more modern traffic flow there.
To help us with Beck Road, we should enlist Canton Township support, because Canton Township residents are the largest users of Beck Road. So it allows their residents to avoid much of the congestion at Ford Road. Sheldon provides the same service.
Yep. Okay. And then addressing septic user water fee schedules, that's something that's going to come up at a future meeting. Just, we're looking for, Jerry and I are looking for direction from the board on, on how we would like to proceed with that. As a result of the changes that we made in the, the formula, if you will, or the distribution on water and sewer, we have about a hundred and seventy-five businesses and homes and businesses, mostly homes, as you might imagine, that are on septics. And so those individuals have seen a, a increase in their, in their water bills. And many of them are very unhappy about that.
Yeah, I've gotten three or four calls.
We are, we have proposed a, one option that we may want to look at as a credit for these individuals who are on septics. And see if that, if that is something that you'd be agreeable to. Again, we're not going to resolve that tonight, but expect that that issue will come forward in the next three months.
Try to make it simple and have some longevity, so another, the next time we change our rates, it just become, it's automatic, I mean, we don't have to go through another gyration. I don't know how to make it have, kind of like the Constitution, have some longevity, I don't know how to do it. I'm not smart enough to figure it out yet, but, because.
Well, I don't, I don't want to have the debate now, but that's exactly what we did, or exactly what I did. When I set the rates, when I readjusted the rates for the water and the sewer, they now accurately reflect what the expense ratio is before they didn't. So all these people that are on septic were drastically underpaying for their water for years. Now they're paying the right amount for water. So I, I would be opposed to whatever solution we came up with, because in my opinion, we fixed it already.
And that's, again, that's a great discussion for the future, but it is something that will be coming at you.
The only boo-boo we made is we said that it was, didn't increase anybody's rates, and it did.
For roughly, probably, I would say about a hundred and fifty homes that are on septics. Okay, so fiscal integrity, budgets, audits, finance, taxes, personnel. We do have a public safety renewal this year on the November ballot that we'll have to deal with at some point.
How many mills is it?
Point nine-nine.
Yeah, it's a little less than one mill, it's the fire, the line item that says fire, it's the renewal for that.
Do you know the year that it was initiated?
I believe it was fifteen years ago.
And we do need it, we've been, we've always factored that into our, our long-range projections. So we'll have to get that on the ballot, we'll have to vote, vote to get it on the ballot as a renewal. Your taxes will not be going up. In fact, they're going down from where they were in the beginning. Fifteen years ago, because of Headley, yeah. Update budgeting appropriation process. This is sort of a broad summary of really what Ginger Moriarty is working on right now. She's got some, some really good ideas on how we, how we appropriate, when we do it, rather than doing quarterly financial lookbacks and, and budget adjustments, maybe doing that on a more frequent basis, maybe every meeting. That's going to take some, so, we're going to have to learn how to do that, because we've never done it that way. And then just updating, she, she's got some really good ideas of tightening up the budget process, making sure that she understands where the money's going, and how it's being spent, and when, and what's capital, what's general fund, and all that, so. That's really more of her, her long-term assignment for this year. Increase collection rate for transports, emergency recovery, and hazmat, we're going to be talking about that tonight. That's, again, I'm just putting that out there.
Are we going to have, maybe we need to be looking at that more frequently? I know there's a report that comes out, although it's a pretty awkward report. We need a more financial report, maybe Ginger Moriarty can help us with that to, so we have a better tool. Because we, we wrote off a lot, and now we're in a normal mode. So we had a couple, we had a year or so where we had to write things off, because it was old.
Finalize formula for determining joint dispatch cost sharing with city of Plymouth. We've talked about that one for a couple of years now.
What are you going, what are you considering changing?
Well, we, when Cindy was here, we were talking about clarifying and streamlining the, the formula, because the original formula was sort of a secret sauce that only maybe two people could figure out, and they're both gone. They're long gone.
Okay, it goes SEV and, and new houses, things like that, stuff.
So it might be something to look at, I, I see it as another Ginger project where, and maybe she could work with her counterparts in the city, because she's new, and their guy is new. He's only been there for about a year now. And I think maybe with a fresh set of eyes, they could come up with, maybe, again, working with public safety, they could come up with a, a more understandable formula. It's worth pursuing. Implement customer satisfaction surveys online attached to emails. I see this being done more and more where you have a, boy, like a, you know, online survey, I don't know, whatever, whatever format you want to use, where it's actually on every email as an attachment, and you, you can either click it on or not. But it might be something to look at. Two-year budgets, we wanted to start doing that this year, but we, we had too many staffing, snap, you know, too many issues, and so now we'd like to start it for twenty-one and twenty-two. So that would start this year for a twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Ginger has no problem doing that, that's the way that she was doing it in Dearborn for many years, and I think she was doing, what, like, three-year budgets, so. Yeah, so two-year budgeting is not a, is not a challenge for her, she's used to it. Leasing the unused portion of the DPW building, this is something that has, we've been talking about for many years, but I would like to bring it back for your consideration. We have a lot of the old office portion of the DPW building that is still unused, and if there's any way for us to rent that out to either. And if there's any way for us to rent that out to either a business or a nonprofit or somebody, contractors, builders, anybody who, who would find some use for that in that industrial setting. It might be just a way for us to make some money and.
You can isolate that.
Reuse that building.
You can, the, the office is isolated, so it won't interfere.
No.
Are we paying to heat it now?
Yeah, we're doing everything.
Do we have to heat it?
Well, we have, some of our DPW guys are, are in there. They're using, they're, they've. Yeah, and they've assumed.
They live in there?
Ownership, some of that area.
Well, they also use that big room sometimes for some like conferences and information.
Educational stuff.
Yeah, so I think you can't really just close that off somehow unless you put sandbags, I guess. I don't know.
We worked out a, a floor plan with DPW back in 2017 where we isolated what rooms would, could be ours, what rooms could be a renter. And then we identified a couple of rooms that had to be shared. There was a computer room and HVAC room and some other stuff. But, you know, the DPW guys can also come here for training as well. We have a very modern training room as well. So, but again, that's, these are, these are long, these are more long-range ideas. Okay, quality of life, parks, heritage, culture, recreation, accessibility and environment. This is getting bigger and bigger now, which is good. Pursue joint regional recreation opportunities. That's always been a, a goal of ours. And obviously the city of Plymouth is our, our closest partner there. So that's always something that we should be striving for. I'd like to see a township-wide ten-year strategic plan in 2021. I don't want to do it this year because it's a busy year. But next year might be a good time to do a, a ten-year plan that would really, where you would hire a consultant, where you do charrettes, Bob, lots of charrettes and two-steps and whatever Jack talked about. Minuettes, everything. And, but really make that a, a year-long effort that would really involve the public and get them.
Is this for recreation only or it would be all of those items?
Just be everything, be everything. Communities do them periodically.
So you'd have the fire department as part of that?
Yeah, you can have everybody. And you get the public involved.
I like the idea, but it seems like it's a consultant's nirvana.
Oh, I mean, no, consultants do very well. I'm not going to, I'm not going to kid you. They, they love doing that stuff. We would, we would go out for bid and we could, we could hire somebody to do that or, or not. But, you know, it's, again, that's something to think about. The Gulf View Park concept is, is underway. Laura's been working with her contacts at U of M. And we've got, Spalding Decker is going to do a little work out there as well. I think they have to do some survey work, yeah. I'm not exactly sure what for, but they're, they're going to do a little bit out there too. So that's under, that's underway. Increase walking, running, biking options in the township. That's been on our to-do list for many years. That's something that's always ongoing. Plymouth Road, Heinz Hagerty corridor improvements. We see Cheryl Pond is here tonight. Hi Cheryl. She's been one of the advocates for that, badly needed improvements to that corridor. What's tricky about it, it's a multi-layered government operation. So we've got the city, we've got the county, we've got Wayne County Roads, Wayne County Parks, we've got Plymouth Township, we've got private industry. So that corridor is obviously getting a lot of attention thanks to Rivian and Burrows. And, you know, maybe we'll have some other, and Wabasto. And we've got other exciting projects on our side of, of Heinz. And on the city side, we've got the, the Pulte Homes that are going in at the Bathie property. And we've got more upscale housing and apartments and everything. We've got, we've got new businesses coming in to, to, oh, the Starkweather Lofts and the Starkweather property that they're doing there. And, and things that are going on in, in Old Village that, that haven't happened before. So there's a lot of action and activity there. We think we're going to be attracting a lot of millennials, a lot of people who are coming there to work in the, in, really on our side of the, of the corridor. And they'll probably live in the city more than anything else. But people want walkability, bike, biking options. That does not present itself right now on Plymouth Road. The bridge over Heinz Drive is a mess. It's busted up. It's covered with weeds and it hasn't been cleaned up in, in years. We've been working with the county on this throughout twenty, twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen. The county hit some roadblocks along the way. They had a consultant, an internal consultant who left. And, and when she left, a lot of this stuff just fell apart. And the county frankly has been more focused on the mills, on Phoenix Mill and Wilcox and Newburgh. Now that that's over with, at least for now, they may be looking more at, at promoting accessibility. There is a parcel at the southwest corner of Plymouth Road and, and Heinz. It's in the city. It's where those old apartments were in the city side and they burned down like in twenty, twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen. So right now it's a vacant lot. And it's the only, it's the only corner, the only quadrant of that intersection where there's safe public access into Heinz Park. So the idea would be for the county, the county is actively studying the purchase of that parcel. And then we would, they, they would build a, a small parking lot, maybe a bike rack, maybe one of those bike maintenance things. You know, no sheds, no, no restrooms or anything. And then a path that would allow people to walk and bike down into Heinz Park from that, from that launching pad. And if you combined that with serious upgrades to Plymouth Road and beautification efforts, I think that would be great. It doesn't help us right now that we've got the vacant Courthouse Grill site. That's very, that's become a real.
What's the status?
Well.
Because that has the easiest access to Heinz Park through that back end.
And actually it doesn't. We, we've studied that extensively. And the only way you can get back there is, is through some kind of a, a switchback sidewalk. It's, from an ADA or biking standpoint, it's too much of a drop-off.
But if you made it a switchback, it'd be okay?
Possibly, but again, that's, that may limit some of your, your ADA and accessibility options. Because you're still at a pretty steep, steep slope. Laura, Laura did a lot of work on that.
But Hillside is on hold or whatever it was?
Hillside is, the.
The company.
The Courthouse Grill site is on, is on hold right now. The developer is having some issues. And now they're looking to submit a brownfield plan in order to tear down the building. And they want something on the order of two and a half million dollars in brownfield assistance to tear the building down.
That's an abuse of the brownfield to have somebody pay for your raising of the building.
I'm going to withhold.
We need to watch that carefully.
We get to approve the brownfield plan, so, so we'll just.
Don't want to, yeah, we don't want to prejudge it, however.
Well, most of the Plymouth Road, most of that area in there is in the city of Plymouth. They own the baseball diamonds, they own the cemetery.
The courthouse itself.
The courthouse is.
The courthouse is in the city. The courthouse, the courthouse grill is in the township.
Right.
The condos across from the courthouse grill are in the township. The Starkweather Lofts are in the city. This vacant land that the county may acquire is in the city.
Right.
So again, it's a multi-level effort.
But the city has a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of, it's in their area.
Yeah.
We want to encourage them, but they need to get on it.
But the county is really, you can't do, it would mean a lot if the county would radically fix up or even replace that bridge over Heinz Drive.
Well, and I think if I recall some of the emails that you might have sent, there's a reference to the fact that the proceeds from the sale of these mills are supposed to go back into the park. Hence, acquiring this piece of property would be very much in keeping with that theme, so.
It'd be awesome.
Yeah.
It'd be awesome. We've also had residents of Lake Point who have approached us about a sidewalk that would go from Lake Point, the Lake Point area down Wilcox, all the way down to Heinz Drive. There is no sidewalk at this point. And if that, once the, once the Wilcox Mill project is done, if, if it's done, then it would be great to have a sidewalk that would connect Plymouth Township more, more effectively with that, with that area.
Well, that's a short sidewalk on Wilcox there.
No, yeah, currently.
That's in the, the portion that's in the township.
Yeah.
Which would be on the east side of Heinz Drive. That's a, the other one is in the city.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we know. But it's, it's a pretty long sidewalk that would be required.
But to the point, to the county property is really not that far. Those houses border, the houses on the north side of Wilcox, east of Heinz Drive, that were built in the early two thousands or late nineteen nineties. They have a sidewalk that goes to the end of their property.
Right.
The rest, this county, it's on the county land.
Right, yes.
So Melissa Daub and the county.
Yeah, no, we, we know. That's, and that's why we're saying, while if you guys are going to update the Wilcox Mill, then this would be a great time to make it more accessible. Where did I leave off?
Township-based five oh one C three.
Township-based five oh one C three. This was on last year's as well. A lot of communities have a community fund for recreation and civic events. It's something that we talked about, I think, prior to the, the park experience and.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that a lot. I mean, I'd like to see maybe in some form, some of the events come back, but I'm not sure if I'm to the point yet where I would volunteer to spearhead that.
Yeah. But we've got a lot of charitable giving opportunities. Right now, you know, the Plymouth Foundation, which we have no control over, has now partnered with the Canton Community Foundation. And the Canton Community Foundation is now serving as the fiduciary to, to the Plymouth Foundation. We've got other foundations in the, in the community and also a lot of private folks with money. And if we were to come up with a, a five oh one C three, that would be independent of the township, but that would accept funds from individuals or, or groups, Rotary, you know, Kiwanis, things like that, that could be used for recreation or civic events. I think that goes a little bit to, to Jack's comments about providing funding for the Memorial Day Parade and, you know, maybe some other things that we could do that would be of a historic nature. You know, I know we're thinking picnic maybe, but I'm just thinking, I'm thinking about other things that would be.
But regardless, I mean, I completely agree. That should be done by an independent.
Yeah.
Organization.
But like if we want to do a historical marker or maybe do a beautification effort somewhere outside of like the DDA or the, of the boardwalk or the, the pathway at, on Five Mile and Ridge someday. Or even property acquisition, you know, I mean, that might be possible. Okay, I'm, okay. Study use eco-friendly vehicles, partnerships with auto automakers, Rivian. That would be, that's something that I know one of our, members of our Environmental Leadership Commission suggested that we maybe talk to some of our local automakers and see if we could be used as a test case for maybe a vehicle or an off-road vehicle or a pickup truck that might be electrified, electrified. And we might be.
Great, that, yeah, if they offer it for free.
Yeah.
Remember trucks are made to work.
Yeah.
We use work trucks here.
Yeah.
And typically battery-operated things don't do a lot of work for a long time.
Well, you never know, but that's something to think about, something to think about. Reducing energy consumption. This is again, something that I've heard from the Environmental Commission. Don't, really don't have a whole lot of ideas on that right now, but that's really something that they should be tasked, tasked with. Implement a residential tree planting promotion. We are doing that next year. We've got all these, this year I should say. We've got all these surplus trees now and tree fund and everything, so we'll start, we'll start working on that. Jim Anowitz also, Chuck left us with a lot of, a lot of detail from when we had a tree planting program in the past. I don't know if I want to re-adopt that plan because it was extensive. But I think if we try to keep it simple and.
When you say tree planting on private property or?
On, on easements, on easements. There was a lot of, there was an extensive.
Proved a plan, but we never did it. We didn't spend any money on it. We didn't do anything.
I don't recall.
Somebody put a lot of time and work in it, I can tell you that. So we got to get started on that. Increase cooperation, coordination with Plymouth Community Council on Aging. They are providing a lot of services that we don't have to pay for. And we don't really do a whole lot for seniors in Plymouth Township and they do ninety-nine percent of the work. So whatever we can do to improve our coordination with them. They did a fundraiser in twenty eighteen that was very successful. They raised over ten thousand dollars. They did not, they chose not to do one in twenty nineteen, but they'd now like to do one probably in the spring of this year.
That's a raffle, like last time was a raffle?
Well, they had a raffle, but it was a fundraiser. It was like a wine and cheese sort of thing, yeah. And we did it at Friendship Station.
They raved ten thousand, almost ten thousand dollars, I think.
Oh yeah, over, over ten grand, yeah. So, you know, if we can help them with fundraising, if we can help them with, you know, any, anything that they need that's reasonable. We've done a lot of improvements over at Friendship Station. But whatever, whatever else they need and that we can do to promote them. Study feasibility of new golf course entrance off Ann Arbor Trail. That's a recurring issue. I don't mind doing that, but, you know, we'll, we'll have to make a commitment that we're going to have to put some money down on that. And I guess I also would say, you know, be careful what you wish for because I, I don't know what, I don't know what the results of that are going to be. I think you're also going to get some citizen opposition from the folks south of the golf course.
Yeah.
Right now, we're in a no-win situation because we get complaints about people who can't make turns from the course onto Beck. Those are valid concerns and, and I share them. It's, it's impossible to make a left-hand turn some days. But at the same time, the entrance off of Ann Arbor Trail is going to have its own set of difficulties and challenges. Upgrade forest walkway area township park. This is something that's been on hold for the last four years. This is that heavily wooded area north of the, adjacent to the massive parking lot, the landing strip. There's a lot, there's some history behind there. Some of it is, there was a lot of stuff that went on in, in twenty fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. People built things back there. They built bridges, they built comfort stations and picnic tables and stuff. A lot of that was just done by hand. It was not done to code. It was not done with permits. It was just done. Because we had other pressing issues at that time, we, we just let it go. So it would be nice to revisit that now. And I'd like to get a professional in there who could give us some pointers on what we need to do. It's, it's an area that I'd like to see more use in, but, but we have to do it the right way. We just can't be building stuff like bridges and tables and sitting areas that are not ADA compliant, that are not up to any standard or code. They were just, they were just built. So we need to do it right, the right way. And I'm, I'm willing to have us start working on that.
We had at one time a five thousand dollar grant from Bosch for that.
I don't know Chuck, if that was for actual construction of, of, of equipment or if that was more for an interpretive center.
Yeah, well, I think it was interpretive.
Yeah, I think that was more for plaques and.
But they may have a willingness to do something again.
Yeah, but we, I was also thinking of bringing in some of the Metro Park people again and, and have them take a look at it and give us some ideas. There's, there's, there are, there's natural water features back in those woods. There's drains, there's swales. And I, we, we have been told that, that we needed DEQ at that time, DEQ permission, which was never sought. It was just, somebody said, build stuff back there and they said, okay.
Well, they didn't, they didn't change the grade.
They built over things though. They built over swales and riparian area.
I don't think that, one, I don't think it's a wetland, that's a highland. And that's a virgin forest, so we need to be careful about the trees. Because if we disturb them too much, they will die.
Oh yeah, no, we don't want to do that, but it's, we, we need to, we need to take a fresh look at that now.
We need a plan.
We've got the time, we've got the funding, we, we can do that. Determine future viability and work, use of the wooden place structure. Chuck and I were out there back in the fall with people from Metro Parks. They did a very cursory review. They prepared a, a report. The structure's got, got its pros and cons. You know, I, I think we should try to, we should try to keep it going for a while, but we have to, we should start again, long range. What's, what's our long-range goal for that site?
Well, many of the things that they suggested, we, our own people could do quickly.
Like what, for example?
Changing out the swings so that you'd only have one age group on the swing. Changing out the swings so that you'd only have one age group, uh, on the swing versus babies and larger kids. You know, we just change out, you take out two bolts and put a different swing in. Uh, some broken boards, that could be done easily over the winter.
Yeah, the swing sets though, um, when we were out there, they, they were, they were coming apart, and, and there were bird nests and, and...
Yeah, but...
Birds were living in all of those swing...
Well, that's okay, birds are a natural thing. Um, but replacing boards, it's the most popular place structure we have in Plymouth Township.
Yeah.
Um, I think it could be done with our own people. We, we actually have the, uh, gauges that we didn't know what they were there until Metro Park person pointed out, yes, that's what this bag is for, uh, the gauges to test gaps and things like that. So our people, uh, are trained or will be trained to know what to do. And so, but changing boards are easy. I could go out there and do that.
Okay, that's a volunteer if we got, we're...
Yep, sign me up.
Talk on that one.
Be great to have a work, you know, maybe, maybe one of the, maybe one of the service clubs would wanna go out and have a workday. Uh, they like doing that kind of thing, like, maybe the high school students, maybe Boy Scouts, but changing boards is a pretty routine thing.
Scouts, yeah.
There was a couple other, um, safety issues that they pointed out in terms of, um, drop, some of the drop-offs and, and stuff were not, were not up to modern standards, so. Uh, and so I'm just, again, these are, these are things that we, we have to put on our radar.
Are we going to put new chips in this year?
Uh, I hope so, I think we budgeted for it, so we'll, uh, and we've told that to the park staff. Uh, let's see. Update park rules and regulations. We, we do need to update some of our park rules. Uh, I asked Sarah Vaisal to put together some of the things that she's been hearing and seeing. Things like, uh, some of it's really mundane, like no water balloons or silly string, this would be for in the pavilions, in the pavilions. Um, a fee, we, we really need to do something about a fee schedule for leaving the pavilions and shelters, uh, in a clean and orderly condition.
You mean a deposit system?
We, we have a deposit, we have a system right now, it's not a deposit, but it's a, um, it's a checklist that when you leave and if we find damage, we, you're aware that we can assess you for, for damages. Um, we may need to update the smoking specifics. Um, I know Canton is under the gun right now because they've implemented, I don't know if their rules are in ordinance, but they're acting like this is some horrible new thing, but...
No smoking on the golf course.
No smoking on the golf course, man, I don't think we smoke anywhere in our parks, and I, I think that includes the golf course, I don't know, Mark, do you? Do you see people smoking out there? I, I haven't.
Everybody smokes cigars on the golf course.
Yeah.
I don't support stopping smoking on the golf course.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not, and again, I'm not looking at that as a, a high priority. I, I know you're not supposed to smoke in the park. We may need to expand the definition of smoking though, as a rule, because we have different implements now for smoking, um, and we...
You mean vaping?
Vaping, hookahs, hookahs, marijuana. We, we've had a lot, we've had hookah issues, marijuana issues.
Oh.
Um, now marijuana should be self-evident, but, but, you know, people still don't get it, so...
But you can't consume in public, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Marijuana, yes you can.
No, not in public, not in a public, uh, place. Not in a public place, that's, that's the law.
So on the sidewalk is not legal?
You cannot smoke out, you can smoke in your backyard, um, on your deck...
You've been doing it wrong, Chuck.
I thought you could smoke on sidewalks.
You cannot go in front of Township Hall and smoke weed or anything, or you cannot go out, go in our parks and do that, you can't smoke. Um, and then also just some other things that Sarah's mentioned about, uh, we, we have a limit apparently on the number of weekend and weekday reservations for residents and non-residents, I'm not even sure what that means. Um, but we would, before we would do anything, we would be consulting with, with Sarah and with, uh, with park staff. Our biggest challenge right now in terms of rules and regulations at the park is, is cleanliness, and, uh, the pavilion is, uh, we're gonna have to do something soon with the flooring there, the carpeting is, uh, is in bad shape, it's abused, it's spilled on and worse, and, uh, we're, we're cleaning it now a lot, and, and we either have to start, we're gonna have to come up with a, a different surface, yeah.
We wanna address the dog issue again?
Well, there's no dogs allowed, right, but, uh, you know...
Thank God for putting up a whole bunch of more signs, thank you for that.
Okay.
And people still ignore it, but... Yeah, people ignore it, and I, I don't know, we've talked before about, do we wanna permit them on a limited basis in certain parts of the park?
Well, the Triangle is a great place for dogs.
Yeah, just leased, I mean, leased dogs in the Triangle Park would, we, there would be no opposition to that.
Yeah.
I mean, in my mind, but a dog park, a designated dog park, I'm telling you, there's a lot of issues with those things.
Yeah, agreed. I think that's a good point, if we do have an authorized area, then you make people obey the law, yeah, move to that more likely than, I'll just take my dog and hope to get away with it. And if we're gonna increase the fee to $10, you know, I think we should give people a benefit for that, not just they get a, a tag, so I think it's a good idea to pursue.
Well, thank you to the police force who keep reminding me, I can't go out there and tell the people to take their dogs out of the park, so...
Who can't remind them?
Why can't you?
You can't?
Yeah.
Why not?
Well, you probably... Call them. You probably don't wanna get into confrontations with people.
I think they're protecting you.
Yeah. Some of those...
You're about my height, yeah, exactly.
I know.
You're a braver man than me, I wouldn't dare to talk to any of those dogs.
Yeah, but he's a lot tougher than you, Jack.
But he took an oath to uphold the, the laws and ordinances of the township.
He has taken me.
He's deputized.
Yeah, but he does.
Anyway, uh, was that it? Was that the last one I had there, Bob? Oh, awesome, we're moving, we're moving. Economic development, this is getting a little smaller too. Uh, promote the MITC project, we do that every day, uh, everything there is moving along.
Now, who spends the, who provides the money, or we don't spend money from Plymouth Township, right?
Uh...
Other than the $250?
The smaller amount that you pay for the consultant.
We pay the consultant, and then the state is supposed to reimburse us for 700, or provide us with $750,000 this year, uh, just for admin and consultants and lawyers and whatnot.
$750,000 for the entire MITC?
Yeah. It's engineering, it's lawyers, it's...
It's not marketing.
Oh, we have a separate grant for that, that's $100,000 that we got from the state.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's amazing, it's amazing what the government spends money on.
Hey, it's mostly their property and they can, it's contaminated, so they need to clean it up. This is the number one Michigan land bank project in the state, so they've, they've got a lot of skin in the game, they want, they want it to work.
Something that they're using as an example for all the other prison sites that are closing all over the state, it's something they're...
So it's a pilot program to show how good they are, how good the state is at marketing?
Yeah, and giving money to people to re, rehab sites, I hope that's...
I know they're good at giving money to people. They're the benchmark for that.
They're very good at it, in some cases, they haven't been as good with us yet, but we're hoping that, that they will. Uh, update zoning and planning maps, so these are the actual maps that you get at the clerk's office, they have not been updated in a long time, we gotta do it.
Isn't that part of the GIS?
No.
Yeah, that's one of the fundamentals.
It's, it's related to that, but it's not really, the maps themselves, this is the McKenna thing, it's, it's Spalding and McKenna, need to work with the clerk's office and I presume, uh, Pat Felrath and...
We had, we had some, uh, citizen communications recently, right, about a property that was...
Mismarked.
Mismarked, yeah, yeah, so...
Well, I, I don't know if it was mismarked, it just hadn't been updated yet, and, you know, it's, it hasn't been done in like, I think, five or six years, it's gotta get done.
Longer, yeah.
So, uh, new master plan, now this is the master plan for the, the, the city, the township's master plan that is used by the Planning Commission and the, and the Urban Planner and the Zoning Board and all of that. We have to, by law, we have to have a new master plan by '21. So rather than go through a big, long, hairy process with charrettes and all of that, I, I get, I get bonus points every time I use that word. I just told, I told Laura Haw that just have McKenna do it, work with the Planning Commission. You know, our, our master plan is pretty much...
It's implemented.
It's a done deal, you know, there, we're just tweaking at this point. I, the only places where I can see some, uh, some, I don't know, I would call them even major changes, would be maybe in that, in that, um, Hagerty Schoolcraft corridor across from Wabasto, east of the, the, the Sikh temple.
On the north side of the street.
On the north side, where we've got all those orphaned properties.
You talking about where, Deor across from Blackwell Ford?
No.
No, no.
Across from the junkyard. Master Automatic.
Junkyard, across from Wabasto.
Oh, it's in that corridor between the railroad and Schoolcraft.
Seven houses that are for sale right now.
Yeah.
And the junkyard itself.
Yeah.
I mean, if that ever got sold or somebody wanted to redevelop that, we met, we wanna be able to go in there and now and say...
There was a company looking at that, and we had some problems with how the lo, the land was zoned.
Yeah, and we've also got still a court order on the junkyard site that goes back to the late 1960s.
Yeah.
That grandfathers them in.
It grandfathers them in to some extent. It, it requires some things from them and, and from us, but I don't know if it would totally, I don't know if it would be like a, um, a spot zoning situation in that, in that corridor.
And the owner is now a little bit more...
Agreeable.
...willing to be, uh, flexible.
So you're talking about also the former dump that's on the southwest corner of Hagerty and, uh, Schoolcraft?
Yeah.
That, but I don't know if that's buildable because it's a very deep dump that's had a lot of, I mean, you'd have to do a lot of excavation there to build something.
Yeah, that may not be, uh, developable at this point, but, uh, but again, that's a, that corridor is just an area that I think may, the Planning Commission may wanna look at. I think we need to update the whole MITC area, exactly what, what are we, what are we telling people is gonna get built there? So this is planning, this is the master plan for the Planning Commission, this is their, this is their code that they use.
Playbook, uh-huh.
And, and, and as Bob, as you know, serving on that commission, it's not, it's, it's pretty much a done deal, I don't, I don't see this as a...
That's why, you make a good point, that's why you need to keep close reins on the purse strings, because not a lot of work has to be done.
On that thing, yeah, I agree.
And in the past, it's been a very expensive, uh, opportunity for planning consultants, so...
Yeah. Uh, update various building code provisions, uh, including penalties for non-compliance. A lot of our building code provisions are, uh, they're toothless, you know, they, there's really no room for penalties. I think the one that we've seen most recently is on Ann Arbor Road, we had a house that was demolished, they claimed that it was part of their site plan and they just assumed that it was good to go, but they didn't get permits and, um, we had no ability to, to punish them.
Are they building another house on it?
No, it's part of the, um, the Randazzo-Pulte project across from Picnic Basket. So that's part of it, it's a site, it's a site...
And so maybe we need to look at, maybe just some recodification of all of our ordinances and, and maybe, maybe need to look at some of our policies and procedures. I was looking at some of the, last time they were kinda revisited was, you know, eight, nine, 10 years ago, just to kinda, just to relook at them.
Well, and also, we can, we can think of other examples in the last four years that we've run into where the, either people or developers have either knowingly or unknowingly broken the rules, and there's been little or no repercussion.
Well, and Wayne County has also made it very clear that they're going to start doing penalties for non-compliance, and then they admitted in the past, they have let things go by as well.
It's just not fair to developers and property owners who follow the rules.
Yeah, right. That's right. Exactly.
Well, I think our biggest or most frequent violations of late have been in the tree area.
Yeah.
I can think of three tree cuttings, uh, that just maybe weren't planned, so, Wabasto was okay, because you look at the building, it, it has to occupy the whole piece of property.
Right. No, I know, we, we know what we're thinking of, and we, we know it when we see it, and we, it's, it's frustrating with the trees, at least, we can, we can get them under the tree ordinance and we can put the money in the tree fund and all of that, but for other, for a lot of other things that go done, that, that are done without permits, um...
Parking lot is the other big issue that we're having right now with that.
Where, at Burrows?
You say parking lots being built unauthorized?
Burrows is a big, is a big piece.
Is that what they're building to the east between them and Deor?
Yeah.
That's, so the soccer field is done?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
That's additional parking for Burrows, because they expect major tenants coming in there.
Yeah, they're, Burrows is paying a major fine every day because that parking lot's not done.
They're paying fines to Wayne County, because they're not complying with the stormwater ordinance or the soil erosion.
Oh, so it's the runoff issue?
Both, it's soil erosion and it's, and it's stormwater.
And five and Beck, we've still got that issue.
I'm surprised that they have to have so much extra parking, because Burrows had 6,500 people working there.
They park across the street too.
Yeah.
And where, where LLC is and where the new forest is.
And if you have a major trucking company moving in there, they may need additional...
Trucking, you mean, trucking or product engineering?
Trucking, trucking.
So they're using it for warehousing?
No, logistic, um...
So it's the office, but it's office people?
Office building.
Office people.
But you may, you may have, you may have another major tenant moving in there.
Yeah. Great, it's been underutilized for 25 years.
Just getting back to that non-compliance, one, one thought, I don't know if we can do it legally, but I'd love to make sure that if any developer comes to the township and wants to do business, they have to be current on all of their taxes and all of their water bills. We, at the end of the year, when we send out our delinquent list to Wayne County, I'm not exaggerating, two-thirds of all the properties that are delinquent are all developers that we do business with every day and bend over backwards to support, and then they're not paying their taxes or water bills.
They're not paying their water bills.
Or taxes.
Well, we should take that up next month.
I'm just not sure if Kevin, you know, I'm, I'm looking at Kevin, I, I don't know if, what we can, how far we can go in that area, just because...
Well, let us get sued.
State law, due process, notice, you name it, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, but you can jawbone them.
Oh yeah, and we do, believe me.
We do a lot of that.
Because in the back of their mind, they always know that they don't want to upset the people they're trying to receive an approval from.
Yeah, good idea. Okay, uh, repurpose former Steak and Ale site, yep, well, it's, uh, it's been out there for a long time.
Do you mean also the Bennigan, the whole thing, Bennigan's?
Yeah, yeah. We do have somebody interested, and there's nine acres behind the, um, the Comfort Inn. Um, it's undeveloped, it's, uh, it's an area where I've had a couple inquiries over the last year, one for, uh, senior, active senior housing, and one for, uh, like condos for millennials and young folks.
You mean right along I-275?
Yeah. They don't care.
The first economic downturn, those will be the ones that prices will plunge on.
People, uh, people are working all day and they come home to their, to their cat...
Noisy.
To their cat, and, uh, they go to bed and that's it, so...
And they can't hear, they can't hear, so...
I'm speaking from experience. Okay, you wanna check that out, Bob? He's gonna check it out, so I can't stop. He can drills the...
Where's that location?[1681.71]
Where's that location?
The end of Massey Drive.
So there's Comfort Inn, yeah, can you go to satellite view?
Yeah.
Right behind Jerry. So there's nine acres back there, that is all part of the original, oh gosh, what's his name again?
Don Massey?
No, not Massey.
Newman?
Newman, Mr. Newman. Mr. Newman has passed away and his family, his daughters are now trying to unload some of their properties.
Well, I never knew.
So they own the Steak and Ale site also, right?
Yep, yep, and Bennigans and all that. It's a tough, it's a tough corner, folks, because of access and, and you're never going to get another traffic light out in front there on Massey Drive.
This is where that hotel was supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to loop, if you want to be safe, you would have to loop around
You have to.
to Hagerty Road, otherwise you take your life in your hands.
Right.
If you're
Yeah, which is why Chick-fil-A did not want to move in there because they knew you had to do that loop around.
We, we thought we were going to get a hotel in there at one point, but I think that was more of a financing issue than a traffic issue. But if, if a hotel had been built there, you'd still have to deal with that traffic issue and you'd have to educate your guests to not turn left and to go around. And, and there's precedent for that. I used to stay in a hotel in Okemos, Michigan, outside of Lansing where you, where they told, they had maps and they had flyers that they gave to the people, here, this is how you have to get out of here, don't go the other way.
We want to see you come back tonight.
Yes.
And pay your bill.
Otherwise you get T-boned every time you leave. All right, so Steak and Ale site is always going to be a challenge, but we're always working on it. Assistant marketing longstanding vacant unused properties, that's really Gary's baby and we do a pretty good job of that. And promote job training and placement with Plymouth Canton Schools and Schoolcraft College. What's that program that they've got now? That thing with the Engineering Society of Engineers, it's a, there's a cute name for it, but
We've expanded that from being not only engineering to some of the robotics and some of the other things.
I mean, we don't spend any money on this, we don't have the money, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a function of township government, okay? We'll make that clear.
Good, you're right.
But we, but we, you know, I don't want to get into job training, we got enough people doing that, but we get a lot of inquiries from new businesses and from businesses that are expanding, they're hurting. I mean, there are thousands of jobs that are unfilled right now in Plymouth Township alone.
CNC operators, a thousand of them right now.
There was a guy named Henry Ford that had the same problem over 100 years ago. He started his own trade school and he trained people and he raised the wages such that he could attract them.
And he brought them up.
These local business people that need to read some history. It's not that new.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That what they're looking for is taxpayers to pay to train their employees, that's what they're doing. Rent-seeking businesses.
Schoolcraft has been very, very receptive to us sending businesses over to them. They're working with any kind of program they can do to
That's their mission.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we can match them up, if we can encourage, if we can just be a matchmaker.
And there are businesses in town right now that are hiring high school grads. You don't need a degree, they are training you for some of the major businesses in the township.
Yep. So I'm going to go to, I'm going to go off the screen here and go to the goal suggestions from Treasurer Clinton. That's not on the screen, Bob, so this is, this is part of your hand. So revisit the decision to outsource the HR payroll function. Any comment on that?
Yeah, I can go through these for you real quick, it's, I mean, the jury is out whether or not the decision to outsource that has been successful, we've lost two payroll processors already and we've just lacked that consistency. And, and we're making mistakes as a result of the process.
So the person we hired three or four months ago is gone already? Yeah, yeah. I, I agree with that, just that, and some of the mistakes end up falling in on, on finance where we got to try to fix things.
Yeah.
And it's, so it's causing a few problems. A real good idea, you know, for us to try that, but I think maybe we need some more consistency.
Consistency, yeah.
Consistency of what?
Maybe hire a full-time person as opposed to
You mean for payroll?
Correct, no, I mean, I mean HR and payroll.
Okay, so, all right, so the savings you're saying is not being currently realized and there's, and the service, too many department heads are having trouble getting things handled through the current system.
I think that the
Too much confusion, too long to get things resolved.
Yeah, I think it's just that the person isn't on call there when you need them, so you have to schedule time, you have to call, you have to leave voicemails, you have to emails. It's working, it's just not working as well as it could and should. And payroll has been a bigger problem than HR because we haven't had that consistency. There's been mistakes, we've had to clean up, et cetera.
Well, the savings, if a department head or supervisor has to spend time, that, that's a cost.
Sure.
That they spend time that they normally wouldn't spend on payroll, so.
I didn't complain when I got Bill Heitman's check. I complained when I had to give it back.
I think under our current system, we have hired another person, she's going to be starting on the 13th or whatever the next two weeks or a week from now. I just think there has to be better coordination with whoever is doing payroll in the finance department and I think that, I think that will be another task for Ginger to help shape a different framework of cooperation between those two elements. And I'll just throw this out there, I looked at Canton Township, they're advertising right now for a human resource generalist. That is not the human resources director, I know the human resources director in Canton Township. So this is a generalist and the top, the salary's topping out at 65 grand a year. So I assume that their HR director is making at least, I would say at least 100,000. So they're spending a ton, now granted, they're a lot bigger than we are, you know, apples and oranges, but just remember what kind of costs that you deal with when you have to hire a full-time person. And that's not including overhead and legacy costs and all that jazz, so.
All that's true, but when you start running into issues and, 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 and my department there and the finance are running into issues all the time and having to spend time on those things and correcting the general ledger and and all those kinds of things, they just, they just consume time and it kind of frustrates the, the finance department that they're doing payroll as opposed to, you know.
Well, and I'm going to defend the payroll gal again, the one who left.
Oh, no, I'm not saying
I mean, the one who left is the one who took the extremely complex fire contract and plugged in all the numbers. I don't, I have yet to hear any, and I know you guys aren't shy, I haven't heard any complaints yet about how that transition went from the, to the new contract, and that was done the span of like three weeks.
Pam did a wonderful job, I mean, just wonderful job.
But Pam's not here.
Pam's not here.
She put it into a spreadsheet formula?
Absolutely, yeah, we did it in one day.
Yeah, I mean, she was, anyway.
Did your people, did the fire department get paid for the back pay?
They did.
Before the end of the year?
Yes.
Wow, thank you for doing that.
Without any problems, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I had a couple guys come to me and I said, okay, show me what's wrong, and they explained it to me and I said, no, this is why it's correct. They said, oh, I'm sorry, chief, you're right, we're wrong.
Were they thankful that they got the money and time for Christmas?
I believe so, yeah.
They're better.
Yeah.
Along those, the lines number two, and I'm, I want to spend a lot of time, but we're currently on the ADP payroll system. BSA offers a payroll module. It would further allow us to integrate the finance and the payroll functions. And even when you're budgeting for the next year, you think about 80% of everything we do is, is around payroll. And having that directly in BSA would cut our budgeting time in half.
Would this, do they also have, ADP was, had a timekeeping module that we were using. Would we have to keep the ADP timekeeping module or could BSA do it also?
BSA has their own, yeah.
Because at one time, we were paying ADP nearly 30 grand a year, I don't know what, I think you guys said you reduced that.
Yeah, we reduced that, I couldn't tell you what it is, but.
So this may be a good opportunity if it's a good system, but ADP's a pretty good benchmark, I mean, that's hard to beat them.
It's worth, it's worth looking at, I know that our benefits consultant recommended changing payroll systems, we weren't ready for that, that was, that's a big job. But it's, it's worth exploring. I bring these next three up every single year. We are, we're pretty antiquated when it comes to the way we collect data for water bills and then the way we process and collect water bills. We still go door-to-door with, with meters, people walking door-to-door. I don't know of another community that does that. I think we're ready for a technology upgrade to at a bare minimum, drive through neighborhoods and collect data and download it.
What would be the cost of implementing that?
Don't know.
Should be a lot, I would think.
I would, I would think you'd have to, you'd have to swap out every meter in every single house.
Oh my God.
Correct. Well, it's, it's the year 2020.
How does Canton Township read meters?
The Canton Township drives through neighborhoods. The meters that they have on the houses are stronger for wifi, so instead of walking up to it and clicking, you can just drive through the neighborhood and it automatically collects the data. They could have one person, and the reason, and now what they're able to do because of that is instead of billing every three months, they bill every two months. Other neighbor, other neighboring communities just do it off a tower, it's real-time access. Gross Point Woods has been doing that for 15 years now, collecting water meter data from cell towers. So it's a, it's a, we're antiquated in this process and it certainly is worth exploring, now we can have efficiencies in this area.
What you say, number three, what do you mean there?
Well, here's, here's Livonia's water billing rate methodology. You pay a fixed price for water per month and a fixed price for sewer and then a variable and a variable. They have two lines on their bills, fix and variable. We have
All variable?
We have.
A minimum and then a variable?
I think we have a, it was just a patchwork and I'm, and I'm obviously there is a concern in doing large-scale changes to your methodology, I get that. Because every time you change it, it's going to impact 50% of the people negatively and 50% of the people positively, I get that. But it, but eventually you're going to have to make the change and have your rate and methodology reflect what reality is. And today, our rate and methodology doesn't reflect reality. And by the way, GLWA keeps changing, every single year they increase a little bit the fixed component. So we're putting risk on ourselves because we're basing all of our rates on usage of water. If nobody used water, we would be eating a lot of the costs, those fixed costs associated with the service.
And if they reduce their water consumption.
Or, or if we have, if we have a wet year and people don't water their lawns, we run that risk, we end up paying more. Okay, um, allow DPW, this is just a personal, personal gripe of mine, is during the summer when you drive on Ann Arbor Trail between, you know, where the, where the park is and where the golf course is, all the way down to Beck Road, all of that stuff is overgrown, I mean, they've got trees and shrubs and scrub. And when you get to the middle of the summer, it's so overgrown that it, it, it covers the bike path, so people have to ride their bikes in the street. And it's the same thing along Beck Road. I know they're Wayne County roads, I know they're responsible for the maintenance, but they're not doing it, so I'd like to turn our DPW loose and fix up that area to maintain it during the years and keep the park and the golf course area better looking than it is today.
I have empathy for that, I, but I, the county is one of our largest single takers of our tax money. And the right-of-way is their job, maybe we need to tell them and follow up with them so that they do some of their jobs. You know, we send a lot of money, we're a donor community to Wayne County. So, but I like, you know, I know what you're talking about, the rest of us, we take care of our own trees that are in the county right-of-way. Private, most private people, some people don't want to, but most of us trim our own trees or pay for them to have trimmed. But I know what you're talking about, you're right, that spot is really bad, in fact, sometimes it's almost, if you have a taller vehicle, it will hit the vehicle when you go by.
Right, yeah, and it's not, it's not, you know, widespread across the township, but it is in certain key areas that impact safety and impact the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Answering the road problems, you fill out the form and I know Sue does it all the time.
Yeah.
And I send them in too, if I see a pothole, they're out there within two days. I don't know, can we do that with trees?
Well, I think supervisor tried to do that and called attention to it last year, but there really, really wasn't much of a response.
What Wayne County does is they, they pass that over to their forestry division, which is
It's two people.
Two men in a truck. And it's, it never gets done, it just never gets done. I mean, I, I don't know if our guys should be doing it because there's training involved.
Liability.
There's liability, there's special equipment that you need, you can rent, I know you can rent equipment. I'm almost tempted, I wish, I wish I could hire a company to do it who's qualified and trained and, and has the experience and then bill the county.
Bill the county, yeah.
Just bill them, send them a, send them a bill, it may be fun just to try that once.
Maybe the next time Commissioner Dobb appears, we could raise this issue and see if she would work on it.
I like that. Well, I trimmed trees along Ann Arbor Road this year because they were growing.
So you're trimming trees and then you're attacking dogs in the park too?
He hates trees and dogs.
Yeah, hates trees and dogs, there you go.
Trees and dogs do go together, so.
All right, number, number seven, we're, we're a year into this golf course contract, I know we're going to hear from the new managers in an upcoming meeting, but I, I want to start working on that strategic plan sooner rather than later, or four years will pass and we'll be nowhere, nowhere on it, so.
Do you think that they reduce the loss?
They're, they lost about 30 grand this year in the operation of the golf course.
Versus 100 in the past?
70 or 80.
I don't know, depends on how you calculate.
We paid them 70 plus the 30, so we lost all in all a hundred versus 150. They will, and you'll hear this from them, that if it hadn't been such a horribly wet spring, they would have made money. Because they have, because the golf course was wet and they have drainage issues on that golf course, which didn't allow them to take carts out for at least the first two to three weeks of the season, so that impacted them significantly.
I can tell you, every golf, I'm, you know, I'm on, I'm on the Metro Parks Commission and they got killed on their golf courses all over
So they had a bad season?
Yeah, it was wet, it was cold and wet and it rained like crazy and golf courses all over the place got crushed. It was terrible. The only thing that's helping us this year was the fact that they were still golfing last week, I think, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was packed too, I was amazed.
That's, that's the downside, the good side is that the reports I'm getting and the tours that I've taken, that golf course is as good in shape as it's been in a long time, the greens are beautiful, the tee boxes are beautiful, they're making new tees. They're systematically trimming down trees when they can and making the course more playable, so they got a lot of rounds in this year and they got a lot of good feedback, they were able to raise prices a little bit, so you'll, you'll hear more from them, I think the first year was a solid B in, in, you know, what they did. And then my last one, and I don't know much about this, but I'm starting to hear an awful lot about it, is, is the implementation of this 5G technology. The, the companies are going to start flooding us with, with wireless waves on, on cell towers and stop signs and street signs, et cetera. I don't know the impact of what that has on people, but I've read a little bit that townships can influence what we let in and when we let it in, and I think that's something we've got to look closely at before we just say, come on and bring it all into town.
Yeah, agreed. Livonia is passing an ordinance, a lot of controversy, some people say there's data that says it has negative health effects. Michigan, we ought to contact Michigan Townships Association and the Michigan Municipal League, what, maybe they've done. When we had the cable companies, we had a consortium that faced the cable companies because one little township can't take on Verizon. So maybe something like that will come up, I don't know, but the cable companies, it was something that happened 20 years ago, I don't remember what it was.
It was
Metro Act?
It was, it led to the Metro Act, it led to the Metro Act, the state eventually intervened and took all that local control away. But there was a coalition, Mayor Guido in Dearborn was behind it and it was, he had a, they had an acronym and all that and
Allegedly the FCC controls almost all of the 5G activities, so we do have, we, we need to be proactive because I don't think I'd want towers every 200 feet on my street.
That's really, well, I, I don't know exactly what the technology would be for our place, but I, I can just tell you, just looking at my cellphone, I, I think it's 5G's already well into the city of Plymouth and it's mostly
It's not really
It's in a lot of the northern areas, unless that's a fake, is that like a fake 5G?
It's not really 5G.
Okay.
It's marketing.
Okay, so that's a, that might be a good discussion for, maybe it has to have with Kevin at some point.
Planning on that is a good thing and benchmarking because we'll get a lot of pressure from people that want to be high-tech, you know, maybe one thing is, you do it in industrial park. You know, that's where they get started or something like that.
5G needs, it's a very short range and it needs a lot of assets on, so they're primarily they're doing it, building it out in urban areas where they have a lot of buildings available, stuff like that, because it's, it's
Buildings with people, where, where there's high density of people?
Yeah, and high density of buildings because you got to put these, you got to put these transmitters all over the place. They're small and they're, they're more higher-powered, but they go, it's a shorter wavelength, so they go a shorter distance. But the, the big thing with 5G is that's the enabling technology for self-driving cars. Because, pardon me? Because cars, self-driving cars are going to need to talk to each other, so they're going to need a lot of bandwidth. And so you'll see it first develop along highway corridors.
Okay, I'm done. All right, Chuck, you want to go through yours real quick?
Yes, implement attestation for health coverage at retirees and spouses, employers, and ample time for open enrollment. What this is, is What this is, is people that are in their 50s, for example, that are working somewhere else, that have retired from Plymouth Township, their first place for seeking their health care would be from their employer or their spouse's employer. I think if you had five people do this, you might save $50,000 to $100,000 a year, because many of these people were spending $26,000 to $28,000 a year for their health insurance, and they're working full-time, and they're 51 or 52 years old. I say, go for it. It's all been planned before, and we were ready to do it, but it came off the table because of the other retirees who are over 65 were concerned about what would happen, and those who weren't working were concerned. But those who are working, and then when they retire, or they don't work, or they have an employer that doesn't have health insurance, they come to Plymouth Township to get it.
So the attestation is, you attest that you do not have another insurance option, right? That's what that's about?
Yeah.
But we force you to go on to the spouse's plan.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we have a lot of people who retire-
They have a surcharge option or something if you don't go on the-
You would get a stipend.
Yeah. You get $3,900 right now, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Which is a pretty good, most companies don't give you $3,900.
No, they charge you.
So my judgment is, this would save some money and start the process of people thinking about health care costs, not always coming to Plymouth Township. Anyway, start the process to reopen, Paul. We already talked about that. Develop a report with geographical locations of crimes displayed on a map with GIS and Clemis. Maybe we can think about that. Especially, I think we had an email from somebody saying there was a lot of vehicles in one particular neighborhood that were broken into over Christmas Eve or something. You know, that's where you, when you see things graphically, sometimes you can see trends. In fact, that's the way the police used to do it with the thumb tack they would put on a map, you know, 100 years ago.
Did you see that link I sent you about a week ago?
No.
It's an app called Crime Mappers.
Yes.
Crime Mapping dot com.
Crime mapping.
So essentially, it exists.
It exists.
Right.
Yeah, it's online. It's very cool.
Yeah. And after that incident, the Christmas Eve, we had three break-ins and-
We did?
Two stolen cars, all in our neighborhood.
Were they unlocked cars?
Everyone was unlocked. The two stolen cars left their keys in the car.
Yeah.
And the other ones had valuables that they had left out.
Crime mapping?
Crimemapping.com.
Mapping.
It's incredible. You type in an address, and you can go one mile, two miles, five miles.
How real-time is it? How?
I get emails during the day that says a crime just happened in your neighborhood.
So John, what are we feeding to that? Do you know?
So the way I view that is, it's done through Clemis. Clemis is in control of that crime mapping, so it's updated daily. So as we write the report and it gets approved, as soon as it's approved, it goes into the main base with Clemis, and then it's updated into the crime mapping system. That's how we use GIS data.
So the app or the website that you sent me, who controls that?
I don't know, but I just know that Clemis gives them-
See the date range up top?
Yeah. There's a burglary, right? Yeah. And that was our neighborhood today.
Wow.
Yeah, I had five guys in December standing in my driveway, checking my cars, and I walked up to them, they were surprised. I gave chase, and I did figure, the chubby one, I almost caught.
You sure they were from the finance company?
Yeah, I'm going to take your car back. I know Northville uses this, because Northville sent a thing today that said, we had some crimes at Six Mile and Ridge, and if you see any of these people in your neighborhood, let us know.
You mean, it gave their names or faces?
No, they just gave faces.
Really?
Yeah. And they used it all through crime mapping, right here.
The other thing that I want to mention along these, it's similar, it's along these lines.
So our police department can use this.
Chief Tidrington, if he were here, I know he would want to talk also about the expanded use of the Ring doorbells and other personal phone, personal cameras that are doorbells or other cameras that are out at homes. There's ways now of linking them all up through social media and other platforms whereby if there's a crime that occurs on, you know, XYZ street, like a pack, the one that I'm familiar with was a package theft off the porch. What's that doing there?
They found the suspect.
But they, if you can find a hard-to-find crime like that that happens, they can coordinate all of the different Ring doorbells together and look them all over, and it's a kind of a cool system. The chief's been talking to me about it, and their, law enforcement right now is kind of looking at it, still in a somewhat experimental mode, but that's some cool technology.
So I got one over Christmas, a Ring doorbell, and somehow through Ring, I got a blurb from Northville Township today.
Yeah.
Yeah, asking, yeah, asking if you have any video in this area to submit it.
I got the same thing.
It's motion-activated, right? Is it motion-activated?
Yeah.
Big Brother.
Yeah.
Are we formally adding that to our list?
Um, what?
What do we call it?
The Ring Video Cooperative.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
You're going to end up-
John, you got anything on that?
The Ring Neighborhood?
Yeah, your neighborhood.
There's a program at the Ring Neighborhood. So what law enforcement can do, we have a special code. We can type that code in and then draw a parameter of what we're looking for. When you register your Ring device, it will tell us, these people have a Ring device. We cannot watch your videos, or it's not Big Brother, but it can let us know, these people have one, reach out to them. Now, we can reach out to you through the website if you're registered with it, and it will send you a notification, hey, we would like to know if you have video at this timeframe. Or we can actually put like a ping on there that says, the next time somebody checks in that area, was there any crimes or anything? They'll see a ping from the police department that says, hey, we're interested in this if you have anything. So sometimes people don't register, but they belong to the Ring app, and we can get it that way. So it's either through the neighborhood or through the actual ping.
So when I was on vacation, it gives you immediate notification when the motion detector, and so a message comes up on my phone that there's motion on my porch, and I get a live feed, and it was a police officer delivering my package.
Oh, wow.
And I watched it live.
Kurt and I use it when we go door-to-door. We introduce ourselves, hi!
We've triggered several doorbells.
And barking dogs.
That's true.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, selling dog license at the local vets and raise the price for 10 bucks. Remember, the reason for a dog license is rabies control. Not as big a problem here in Plymouth Township, although amazingly, there's a lot of nasty dog incidents that have been happening in Wayne County.
Canton.
So, but anyway, it's a way to, it's minor revenue. Mark doesn't like the idea. Maybe you can tell us why.
He doesn't like dogs either?
You wouldn't have to sell them so much.
Well, the-
We sell, what, 800?
We personally, processing a water bill or a tax bill is easy. Processing a stupid $5 dog license is about a 10-minute process.
Yeah.
For us. Because you've got to enter a lot of information, you've got to confirm the owner's, the dog's name, you've got to get updated rabies information, all that stuff.
So why wouldn't you want the veterinary to do that?
Well, I don't think the vet has access to our system.
Well, no, they would, you could drop, it's going on in Livonia. You would give them a box of licenses, and they would sell them. And then they give you the money.
But it's not really the selling, it's the gathering of the information.
They got all the information at the vet, right?
They have, well, maybe.
They know, well, the vet, I go to the vet, I've had my dog vaccinated, or then they say, hey, it's time for license, whatever.
What do we do with the information?
Nothing.
We, no, we store it in our system, and then we download spreadsheets for the police department, so that if somebody's got a lost dog and they have a tag, they contact 911, and we tell them who the owner is.
So that'd be the concern?
And you have the dog's name as well?
Yeah, Rover.
No, I'm just curious.
Anyway, I'd like us to do something with it. Move the, it's been $5 for probably 40 years or 50 years. Okay, McClumpha, I know the guy says he's going to give us the sidewalk easement, I'm working it still. The last two, which are a little controversial, I'm sure, Seek Proposals for Audit Services. Had the same auditor since probably the late 90s. Maybe need to think about it. Remember, they were there when all the anomalies happened. In the interest of fairness, Seek Proposals for General Legal Prosecution Services. You can think about that, too. We've had that firm probably for 50 years or something, but they've done a good job, but who knows? These are something to think about. The other one is the resale of the DPW property, opening that up to other bidders if the land has any value. If it's all wetland, you'll find out in a hurry, no one will want to buy it. So that's all I have.
Okay. All right, so what I'd like to do is do what we did last year, which I thought was pretty effective, and that is more work for Mark, which I like. And Mark is going to take these items and put them into a Jack Dempsey spreadsheet. Hold on. Mark, I'll get to you, Jack. Mark's going to put them in a spreadsheet, he'll send them to us, and we're just going to rank them, okay? We're not like what we did last year. And, you know, and then what we'll do is, based on that ranking, if, did you rank, did we rank every single one of them last year, or did a lot of those just die?
No, every single one.
Yeah, they looked good.
Every single one, we ranked on a 1 to 5 scale.
And then we did prioritize them.
Yeah.
Pretty important, yeah.
Okay. Jack Dempsey.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is, to follow up to the suggestion Mark brought about the foliage issues, we did have a lot of communications with at least one resident who raised this kind of issue. And I am aware that there are some ordinances that deal with this, where you've got the foliage blocking sightline on a road, and so I guess I have one copy I'd like to give to you, Mr. Supervisor. Maybe we could have that teed up somehow in some way, just to be reviewing it. So that's one item. And the other is, simply to mention that we've had a lot of folks come in and talk about arts, and so I would expect that to come up somehow during 2020. I don't know what that would mean, but just not a goal for us, but it does seem to be a hot topic. There was a proposal, some kind of plan presented to the city, some master plan, I don't know what happened to it, but-
About what again? I didn't, I didn't-
Pardon me?
About what? I didn't-
Art, art, public art.
Art in public spaces.
Yeah, public art.
Yeah, and then kind of related to that is the issue of soccer. We do have the good agreement for the Lake Point Soccer Field, but now that the borough's soccer field is gone, I've heard from those folks that they're getting fewer and fewer options. And yet, it's still a positive experience here in the township, maybe even a growing activity. I don't know if it's growing, but it doesn't seem to be receding. So just again, on our radar screen, probably that could come up from that group or from parents, saying we need more soccer capabilities.
That's an important one to think about, because we have these developments going on in the technology park, and if we're really going to be attracting internationals, they love soccer, so maybe that'll be, maybe somebody can come up with a creative way to integrate soccer fields into some part of that area of Five Mile and Ridge.
Or cricket field.
Yeah, I think, was it, Kurt, was it Bob McCurdy?
We got baseball.
Yeah. Yeah, he's so knowledgeable about this, I think he'd be great to-
He's given us a lot of ideas, and we've also had the golf course operators have been looking at some sites as well for a soccer venue. There's not a lot of available land, and you always run into a not-in-my-backyard issue as well. There are a few sites in the township that would-
Does Vistion still got a soccer field?
Vistion?
Yeah.
Behind there, yeah, yeah.
Is that still there?
Yeah, and there's one at Bosch, too, on Five Mile. So there's-
The Bosch facility is used by Plymouth Recreation Kids?
I don't think so.
Or as employees?
I think it's employees and others who just rent it for maybe adult soccer leagues and whatnot, but-
Yeah, but something along that idea could be-
Be a good location, though, for a dome or something where Bosch could get some PR out of it and use it for their employees, so.
But Midi has a lot of space. This is the time to think about it. What is it?
MITC.
Michigan, MITC, excuse me. Midi, I'm thinking of the Japanese Ministry of Industry and Trade.
Okay. All right, anything else, Jack?
No.
All right, then let's move on to the fire department issues. The first thing, again, we're not making any decisions tonight, but we do have the ability to purchase from the city of Plymouth a fire engine. It's a beaut, it's only got 14,000 miles on it, so only was driven on Sundays to a fire in Plymouth City, and we could get it for, I don't think the chief's memo has the price in there. I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either.
Where? All right, all right. So anyway, the city, if you scroll down just a little bit from there.
Is that there?
Where, Dan?
Where?
I didn't see it.
All right, so we have a-
I think somehow you guys got the first draft. Because I read it today and was like, I'm not happy with how this was written, but it's in my latest draft, so somehow I must have accidentally sent the first original draft without it. I apologize for that.
All right, so we have an offer from the city of Plymouth for $220,000 to purchase this 2000, the year, is it a year 2000, Pierce?
2010.
2010, I'm sorry. I'm getting, I should let the chief do all this. But anyway, it's $220,000, it's in great shape, and I'm going to let the chief take it from there. Why do we need this? Why is this a good deal and why do we need it?
So the city purchased this particular truck in 2011 after the dissolution of the merger between the city and the township. This is the truck they purchased to make that happen. They-
Was purchased before they started with Northville?
Yes. I believe they purchased it just after they gave us notice. This is a demo unit built by Pierce, so it had a lot of extra features that we typically wouldn't buy in a truck, that they're kind of extravagances that we wouldn't buy. It has what's called a Husky 12 foam system, which is a lot bigger than we would ever buy. Our last two pumbers or trucks we bought, we only bought a Husky 3 system, because that's appropriate for our size. The Husky 12 is bigger, can handle more, it's an extravagance that we wouldn't waste our money on. This truck does have that. It has a Tac4 suspension system on it, which is something that we did not purchase in our pumper that we received in April. The Tac4 suspension is needed on heavier vehicles. We do have it on the ladder truck, which, by the way, arrived in at halt today. It was supposed to be there yesterday, or tomorrow, but arrived today. The truck has a 1,000-gallon water tank, which is bigger than we would normally buy It's an all-around good truck. The city became disillusioned with Pierce after they had bought a Pierce Mini pumper and while it was in their fire station, caught fire and burned their fire station down, their unmanned fire station. Since then, this truck has been kept up at their Spring Street Fire Station and relatively unused since they bought the, I believe their last Rosenbauer fire truck. The city has decided that leasing trucks is a better option for them, and they are doing five-year leases. When we were when we were looking at how we have planned the next twenty years of purchasing fire trucks, we had the idea that, hey, there's a truck sitting within a mile of us that's in great shape that would allow us to not have to purchase another vehicle in 2021, which is when the next vehicle we would have to purchase would be made. We could purchase this truck at a bare minimum for six years. We would have to, we would not need to buy a new truck. What this would do is allow a better rotation for our trucks. We just bought two trucks in 2019. We would really like to be able to buy a new truck every five years and space them out so we don't have to have huge purchases of these, you know. The ladder truck was $935,000. The engine before that was $600,000. Obviously, costs go up every year. We'd like to spread those costs up over, you know. We don't want to make all those costs in one to two years. We want to spread them out. For our fleet, buying a truck every five years would be at best. But if we purchased three new trucks within two and a half to three years, it would make it difficult. We would have to have, you know, a ten-year truck sitting there in great shape, and we would want to start looking at purchasing a new one so that we could spread out those costs. This truck gives us the ability to not have to buy another new truck for at least six years. It will also save us tremendously. If you go to, if you go down a few pages, you're gonna see the heavy vehicle replacement schedule. I'm gonna pass over that for just a second. And you're gonna see, no, just above that, I'm sorry. Right there. That's the cost of maintaining our current Engine 3. This is the vehicle that we would want to replace. That is two years of cost to maintain that vehicle, $52,000.
Since 2016.
This is 2018 and 2019, I believe.
I thought
Or did I say 2016?
The sixteen is a prefix of a PO.
You're right, I'm sorry. There is, there is a 2016 in there, yes. 2016 through today.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So four years, fifty-two thousand.
However, I want to read this email that I got on December 23rd. Upon further review, Engine 3 needs a new water pumper, Matt Halt. After putting a new boot on the radiator line, coolant began coming out of the weeples in the water pump. He's gonna remove the current one today, but he said that Halt has not located anyone that has a replacement water pump for this old of an engine. Therefore, if they're unable to find a replacement, they will have to rebuild the current water pump. This engine was out of service, this is a frontline truck today, for over three months this year.
What brand of engine is it?
The, it's a, the motor in it is a Detroit Diesel. That motor was purchased in 1992 and discontinued in 1995. We've discussed that motor before.
Well, I'm having a hard time believing that a Detroit Diesel engine does not have spare parts. They have engines from the 1930s that are in Africa that parts are provided for, so I don't know. Somebody needs to do some homework. Detroit Diesel is excellent at
If you recall, we had a very similar argument about this particular truck a year ago in which we had put fuel injectors. We kept having to replace fuel injectors. They stopped manufacturing fuel injectors for this engine in the nineties. We're putting brand-new-in-the-box fuel injectors in this vehicle that are bad, new in the box, and having to just throw them away and get new ones.
Throw them away and get a refund?
Well, yeah, we weren't paying for them, but we would have to take the truck out of service, take it back to get serviced, and it wasn't working for the community. This truck has failed numerous fires. It's a 1992. As you see in the replacement schedule, we planned on replacing this vehicle in 2012. And it's still in service today. Engine 2, on the heavy vehicle replacement schedule, we purchased in 2000. And that truck is planned to be replaced, was originally planned to be replaced in 2020, this year. That truck is a great truck to have as a reserve vehicle. It's twenty years old. We would love to put that truck in a reserve role. Take this truck, here's the pictures you see of it right there, and place that as the frontline pumper out of Station Number 2 on Wilcox Road. That's, that's the truck on the Blue Forest Pierce when it was constructed in 2010. That's the end of the, that's all I have for that truck. So if you want to go up.
So this truck is amazingly similar to the truck that was offered to us in exchange for, to defray some of the costs.
It is the truck.
And you rejected it. You said it didn't meet our specs.
No, no. In that case, what we said was it was in poor taste to accept a truck for costs that should be going to healthcare. That was the discussion then.
I remember you said that it didn't meet your specification, but
No, the issue with this truck is we said it, we went and looked at it then. We said it's a fine truck, and we wouldn't have an issue taking it. The problem is, is that this is money allocated for healthcare, and if we put it in there, we'd have to still take money out to pay for healthcare. Or, am I getting it right? It was healthcare, right?
I don't recall that discussion, but okay, I thought it was a technical thing. Okay, can we get a better price?
Two-twenty is pretty darn good.
Two-twenty is a very good deal. We hired Halt to come out, and they came out and looked at this vehicle. They sent all the information of it to a dealer in an appraiser in Texas who said that two-twenty would be an excellent price for this vehicle.
What would a comparable vehicle like this cost, brand new?
If we were to buy that vehicle right there, brand new, today, over $800,000.
Yeah, because it has the stuff on it that is, stuff that is luxury that we wouldn't want. So we bought our own truck. The real decision is, if we bought our own truck, it'd be $650,000 at our spec, downgraded.
It would be in 2018 prices when we specked out that truck. But when we buy a new truck in 2021, we are going to be, there's gonna be cost increases, at least 3% most likely every year from 2018. So that's eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. That's, you know, twelve to fifteen percent cost increases between now and then.
Chief, have you got any confidence that we could sell this 92 pumper?
That's a great question. The 89 pumper, we can't sell for any reason. I believe that the 92 has value today. I do not believe it has value five years from now. I think we'll be in the exact same boat with that truck five years from now, where nobody will want to buy it. I think today is the time to get rid of it. Probably would have been better to get rid of it three to four years ago. We could have got a much higher price. But if we wait, you know, three to four years, or even two years, we're gonna get nothing out of that truck. It's
Are there brokers that broker these to third-world countries?
There are, yes, there are.
All right, that's where I think you'd be able to sell it.
One of our older vehicles went down to Argentina a number of years ago when I first started.
When, how long would it take to take possession of this?
Well, we would have to vote to make the offer, the city would. And I believe as soon as that was made, they would probably want the check, and we could drive up to Spring Street and pick it up. They've been very accommodating every time we've wanted to look at it, to go up there.
So why are they getting rid of it?
They're not getting rid of it. It's just in storage. They don't need it.
They're mad at Pierce?
Oh, it's extra.
No. It's a relic of their former agreement with us, and they
No, this was bought to get away from us. This is, I do believe that they don't like that truck because it's a Pierce. And they have decided that they want to buy Rosenbauer, which is a company out of Austria, I believe. They have just approved to purchase a Austria. They have just agreed to purchase, on lease, another engine for, I believe, five years. It's in their latest notes from their last meeting to approve to buy another truck.
How many trucks do they have, the city of Plymouth?
The city of Plymouth, part of their agreement is the city of Plymouth owns their own trucks, and the city of Northville owns their own trucks. They have the hundred-foot bucket truck. They have this engine that we're looking at buying, and I believe one other truck that is nearing the end of its five-year lease period.
Couple of questions. Do you, do you think they'd be open to payment terms? Paid over five years, paid over three years?
You guys
I do not know the answer to that. I don't know if they would be open at all.
I doubt, I doubt it, just because they need the money now. I mean, we can try, I think we, we kind of danced around that issue at one point, but I don't think that would be in their plans.
Doesn't hurt to ask or negotiate it, but
We can bring it up to them. I just don't, I don't see it happening.
You're the one that's gotta negotiate that.
I just don't see it happening. No, thanks. Great. But anyway, it's, two-twenty is a pretty good deal.
The other, and I remember when we bought the ladder truck, part of the discussion was the next truck that we buy is gonna be a small, limber, utility type of truck versus a big truck.
Yes, that is true. We are looking at some options for that. Sterling Heights just took delivery of a smaller truck. It's a brand-new motor designed by Roush, Ford Roush. And, but I don't want to purchase a truck like that, be the first person to try a truck like that because that could be a colossal failure or a huge success. I would like to see that truck on the road for a number of years before we opt to go for that.
But that type of a truck, a smaller, more limber, utility truck, I'm just making up a number, more in the 4,000 range versus 400,000 range versus a 600,000 range?
I would say at best-case scenario, high fours, low fives. Just looking, just looking at the market right now and how prices are going up among all the manufacturers. Because the other thing you have to remember is most of the, most of the communities like us didn't buy fire trucks from 2010 till about 2016. And then they started ramping up going, hey, we only trucks. So I know Pierce Manufacturing, which I've visited several times this year, has been kicking out trucks like crazy. They can't build them any faster. And obviously, that's not gonna continue forever. But I believe all the manufacturers are building a lot of trucks right now.
And the new trucks that we bought, what's the anticipated life of those?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, okay. So we could basically wait for two more years and buy a $500,000 truck that's good for twenty years, or fill in this six-year gap with a $220,000 truck? That's the, that's the financial decision that we have to make.
Yes, but we also have to realize that our fleet, which is gonna be a twenty-year-old truck as a frontline truck, is going to be out of service a lot during that. And we're gonna have to rely on keeping that truck in service. And that truck has proven over the last two years to be completely unreliable. And that's the issue, is reliability.
The options.
Mike isn't on.
You have, on one side, the increased maintenance cost. You have the financing cost. This is a little mini-business case with some alternatives. And trying to put it all in words, it needs to be put on a piece of paper with numbers, and then the words associated with it. And then the other component, Mark, is can we finance this with our, from our water fund? Why not?
We'd have to pay it back.
Yeah, we'll have to pay it back.
Yeah.
At 4% interest or whatever, cheaper than a bank.
You mean the
Yeah.
The one or the one, this one here?
Pardon?
You mean this one that we're talking about?
This $220,000?
Well, we've got, we've got enough cushion in our general fund that we could
Oh, so we don't need any financing?
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
All right.
I wouldn't think so.
This was, this was an opportunity we saw as we could help a neighbor out by getting rid of a truck, by buying a truck that they want, getting a truck that we need more than they do, and not having to go out and spend, you know, $600,000 at the end of the day on a new truck a year and a half from now.
I have just a rudimentary question. Why do we need three trucks?
We have a truck at each one of our three fire stations. And when, we jump trucks here in Plymouth Township. So what that means is we have two firefighters at each station. If they roll out of the station in a fire engine or in an ambulance, we have redundancy in that we have another fire truck that may be closer. We ran 3,033 runs last year, so most of our firefighters, most of the time, were out in vehicles doing work in our community. So we need these trucks to be able to respond quickly, putting water on the fire. That's, that's the most important thing, is getting quick water on that fire. And that's what these trucks do for us. Placed strategically throughout the community at our three fire stations.
Out of those 3,033 fires that we did runs on, how many were within Plymouth Township?
That's an excellent question. I can't answer it right now without looking up the number, but
The other question is how many were fires?
Probably over 2,900 of them.
Yeah, how many were fires?
Oh, how many were fires? Fires, we typically have between 70, 80 fires a year.
So we're using
Probably another 250 fire alarms.
We're using the fire trucks primarily for EMS?
We use the fire trucks primarily for auto accidents to protect the firemen, policemen, and EMS personnel on scene of expressways and roads. They're huge blockers. They carry the jaws of life. They carry, they carry more than just firefighting equipment. They carry hazardous materials equipment. They carry the equipment for electrical emergencies, wires down, all that kind of equipment. So they carry a lot of equipment. This truck carries 1,000 gallons of water. Our ladder truck carries 500 gallons of water. The new pumper at Station 1 here carries 750 gallons of water.
That's a lot of weight, 1,000 gallons of water?
It is.
Seven thousand pounds.
Eight pounds a gallon?
Seven.
It's round to eight. But getting back to trucks, you said that we would be, any run that came out of, I think, Beck Road where the new ladder truck will be located, every run that ladder, that ladder truck will go out on? That's what you'd said when we bought?
Yes, not medicals. The ambulance would go out for medicals, but every fire run, yes.
Every fire run? Is that an overuse? Are we wearing out that vehicle prematurely with this?
No, and I'll tell you why.
Do something different? Because running such a big truck for my frying pan that caught on fire, could we save that truck for when we really need it?
If you'll recall, because you were here, we had a hundred-foot bucket truck. And we felt that it was necessary to protect that truck and baby that truck, so it lasted longer. And when it came time to replace that truck, the board said, you don't use that truck. You don't take it on our runs. And they were right. We didn't. We babied it. We didn't use it. No, we need this truck. We need it to make sure our firefighters are safe. We need to do roof reports. We need to get up and look at those roofs before we put firefighters underneath them so that we know that they're safe. Because I, I'm sure you don't look at the, the statistics like I do. Roof collapse, you know, and these newer structures with gusset plates, and now they're just gluing them together, are failing much quicker. And we need a truck there that we can get up there, visualize the roof without standing on that roof, and make sure it's safe before we put firefighters underneath it that could tragically die. And that's why we really needed that ladder truck, and that's why we need it running on every fire. Now, you heard me say that we ran 3,033 runs. That ladder truck is gonna be running on about 300 to 400 runs a year, is statistically what it's gonna run. That's a good use of that vehicle. That's getting it out just about every day, running it, and will allow it to, you know, perform better. Because as you know, vehicles that just sit idle take more to maintain. They don't, they don't work as well. You know, things just go bad.
You know, my judgment is, let's do some more homework on this. Can we, you know, lay it down on a piece of paper? Can we, I don't know, do some more homework?
I mean, I will happily buy a new engine next year. But I thought this would be a great, interesting way to help everybody out. Help us out, help out the city.
Good.
It's a, it's a good truck. I mean, we looked at it. We took it up to Station 2 when we initially looked at it for the payment, when they owed us the money for the healthcare. And we initially said, yeah, this truck's a fine truck for us, but it's really not the right use of these funds.
I think what you should do, and I don't know if we can, we can have this ready for next Tuesday, but what I'd like to see is more of a simple, I think what we're looking for is more of a simple graphic of what this physically looks like with timelines and costs. And, you know, maybe like a scenario one, if we go with this option, what's our cost? What's our timeline? And for all of these vehicles. And then do an option two, what if we don't do this and then opt for a year from now to buy a brand-new vehicle? And what are the
We need everything to the board by Thursday or by Wednesday?
You probably won't have time to get it done by then.
Oh, he could have it as a, he could have it as a handout.
We can expand this replacement plan that you already
That's what I think you should work off of, but make it more, but
That was a thing I found in my old files from years ago.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, that was part of his, you know, but do it more graphically like that. I mean, I don't, I don't think we're doubting, it's a good, it's a good vehicle. It's got 14,000 miles on it. It's gonna get the job done. I guess, I want to know, what are we saving by doing this? I think I, I think I know that answer. What are we saving by doing this? And then what's the timeline? What's the lifespan of this vehicle? Who's gonna get, what vehicle's gonna get retired? What vehicle is going to get thrown away? When is our next big purchase of a vehicle? When is our next big purchase of a vehicle?
Completed staff work analysis. That's what we need.
Kind of where Mark was going. Yeah, you're right. I like that.
Why do you think this one would only be good for like a six-year stopgap? Is it the age or the mileage?
No, I think it's more, the truck would be, is going to be here in Plymouth Township for 10 years. Every bit of 10 years, maybe a little bit longer. I would want to use this truck as a frontline truck for the next five to six years, then go into our rotation to buy a new truck, and then this truck would go to the reserve status. Then the 2000, which would be 26 years old at that time, would be a good time to sell it and get some value out of it, and then, again, go into that good rotation. That's the whole idea of this truck, is to not have three trucks that are brand-new and say, okay, now we want to start building a rotation by buying a new truck, because then we're going to be, we're going to end up selling a truck at 10 years. We're going to get a lot more money out of it, but we don't buy these trucks to sell them. We buy them to use them. And we want to use them for as long as we can, but still have the ability to sell them and get something for them. Whereas the 89, we're getting nothing for that. I can't give it away right now. I have not been able to find anybody, except for a collector up in Howell, who's even interested in looking at it.
If you're bad-mouthing this 92, I'm going to try to sell this thing.
No, I'm sorry, the 89 I'm talking about. The 92 is a great truck. I think somebody should buy it.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. American Pickers.
You must have a lot of land. Yeah, American Pickers. Yeah, I like that.
The paint scheme, you're going to leave it the way it is, right?
That paint scheme matches what we've been doing. The only thing we would change is the names, and instead of the white stripe, we'd probably do a black stripe. With, our typical thing is we have a black stripe with a hockey up tick on it. That's what our other trucks have.
But you could just do nothing.
That's all just graphics.
Yeah, it's graphics, it's cosmetic stuff, other than changing the names on there.
Yeah, our engine we bought in April is a white over red cab. We designed, you know, the very first fire pumper Plymouth Township ever bought was a white over red fire pumper. That's why we went back to that. The ladder truck is white over red. It's historical for us.
Okay, so you've got some work to do, and we'll see if we can bring this back next week, or if not, then we'll bring it back soon. We've got, the city's committed to keeping this offer open until May. That's what I had requested, because we know that government works slowly at times. Not this government, but, you know, just, you never know. We may do, lots of everybody else.
That's why I think if-
The other guys.
To give him time to do, do the homework. We don't have to rush to have it done by January 14.
Okay. So the EMS fee schedule thing, Chief?
The Fire Department last changed transportation fees on March 14th of 2017. The township is not able to collect all funds under the current schedule. For example, the mileage rate is $12 per mile. However, private providers such as Blue Cross Blue Shield will pay $13.14 per mile. With, and this is an additional anticipated increase for fiscal year 2020, which I have since included in there, and that number is now up to $13.40.
Hey, Chief, I read the memo.
Okay.
I don't understand what you're trying to do. Can you just-
Okay.
In 20 words?
20 words or less. Blue Cross Blue Shield will pay more than we're billing.
So we should increase rates?
We should increase our rates. Blue Cross Blue Shield is our biggest payer.
Okay.
And we should increase the rates to be more than what Blue Cross Blue Shields is willing to pay so that we can capture all of funds that we are able to.
Sounds great. Now, I don't understand the Medicare part.
Medicare sets their own billing rate. We have no choice over that. They pay what they pay. I have included what they're paying this year.
Yeah. So are you saying we should set the rates at the Medicare rates?
I'm saying we should set them at the, above the Blue Care/Blue Cross rate. Medicare will be less than that.
But realize if we bill Medicare, we'll just get what Medicare pays.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we write off the difference? Yeah, which we have always done since the inception of this program.
Would you say the number was for Blue Cross? What percentage?
It's huge. 37 or something?
Yeah, it's included in here. It is.
Let's see. All right. Is this basically the fee schedule that we just agreed to for HVA?
No, no.
In fact, you bring up a good point.
Oh, it's higher, higher?
Higher than us, yes.
Oh, okay.
On the, there's a port in here that says credit summary. Blue Cross Blue Shield is 16.27% of all payers. Medicare is 38%. They're the highest payer.
Highest frequency, but the lowest payer in dollar amount.
Yes, correct. Higher frequency, lowest in dollar amount. So when you look at the bills and you see that we, and I'm just going to throw a number. We bill out $20,000, but we only collect $16,000. Most of that is, we have to by law accept what Medicare pays. So we have to by law just eat that cost, and that will continue under this.
So my question is, why don't we use the same rates as HVA to avoid complexity? And questions?
We could. We could go up even higher than this if you want.
Just be consistent.
So what's the HVA rate again?
Here's the people you do hurt with that, though.
Page 43 of 55 is HVA.
So you bet, you talk about, oh, yeah, yeah. Blue Cross Blue Shield reimbursement, but how does that compare to other payers? And what happens if the other payer pays less? We just write it off?
Yeah, yeah. Blue Cross Blue Shield has an agreement, and we have to accept what they pay, just like Medicare.
Other payers besides Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Commercial insurance would pay our rates. Private payers, meaning a resident paying out of their pocket, would pay our rates. So if we were to charge HVA's rates, which as you see are a lot higher, then we would be charging people who pay out of pocket a lot more.
What percentage of the transports pay out of pocket?
17.22.
See, that's where, I don't know how you fix that, because you're punishing people who are cash payers out of pocket, and you allow Blue Cross Blue Shield and Medicare to-
But the system doesn't allow us to do that. The law doesn't allow us. No. We are allowed, because we are a government-
That's what you get for being responsible and paying your own bills, right?
We are allowed to charge our residents less, which we do. We give our residents a benefit. But, and private ambulance is not allowed to do that, but we are. So this is, this is a good, what's that?
Who, I'm sorry, who did you say doesn't allow that, or who doesn't do it?
Private ambulance is not allowed to do that by law. So-
Give a preference, okay.
Plymouth Township is allowed to charge a lesser fee for its residents.
Chief, you included a nice summary from Northville Township. Do they also have a different rate for non-residents, or is it one rate for both?
Northville Township does not. They have one rate for both. Canton has a non-resident and a resident rate, and I believe Livonia does as well. I just look at the communities that surround us that provide the same level of service.
So you're saying there is no value in being consistent with HVA, other than it would cause private payers to pay more?
The problem with being consistent with HVA is if we set our rates to what HVA's rates were set last year when we signed the agreement, they can go up 5% without even telling us, and their rates are going up. This document that you've been provided was the document in our signed agreement. Their rates have most likely gone up 5% since then, or under 5% as the contract allows.
So these rates are good until when in 2020 for HVA?
Until they decide to raise their rates. The township shall be advised if any requested changes in rates above 5% per year.
So under 5%, they don't have to tell them?
They can do whatever they want.
Yeah.
And they will.
Now, with that being said, that's why we chose the number that we did to go up, is we didn't, I didn't want to have to come before the board next year and the year after that. I wanted to be able to realize, every year in December, Blue Cross Blue Shield comes out with what they're willing to pay. I've provided you, I believe, the last four or five years of data so that we could not have to do this every year. We could just, if we do a $14 a mile, that's why I used that as an example, we probably have two to three years where we will be collecting all of the money that we can without increasing our rates and coming before the board and having this discussion again.
Tell me how the treatment and with no transport of $300, have you been able to collect that from people?
We most likely don't use that one. We put it in there. That's something that we can bill. Most people, we try to get to go to the hospital. Somebody that, to this date, I don't think we've used it more than a dozen times at best. This is something we put in there. It's something we can bill for. But if somebody doesn't go to the hospital, we're not charging them.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Pretty straightforward. Okay. Let's see. Supervisor and trustee comments? Public comments, questions?
Plymouth Ice Festival starts Friday night?
Yep.
Could be a bummer at 50 degrees.
It's going to be very warm.
They're saying heavy rain for Friday night.
Heavy rain?
Ice cutting is-
Ice cutting starts at 7?
I saw him doing it this afternoon.
Well, I mean, the official ice cutting.
Yeah, the official one, yeah.
Yeah, at 7 o'clock.
Three inches of rain. Better hope the sump pump is working.
Anybody else in the public? We're going to adjourn then. I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we adjourn at 9:22.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Clerk Borbellows in favor of adjournment, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.